Board meeting of December 12th of the Eskenio Union School District to order. Appears we have no comments, so we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
Did you turn it on and off?
Felt good.
Good, good.
Good weight being behind it.
Good evening. We will reconvene the Eskenio Union School District Board meeting of December 12th to order. If we could begin by saying the pledge allegiance or one complete stand, I'll go ahead and leave us in that.
Ready to begin. I am the pledge allegiance and security flagline of the United States of America and consider you a representative of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that all board members are present, and we now have a report out of closed session. In the matter of existing litigation, special education OHS, OAH case number 202110186, the board voted to approve the special education settlement agreement by a vote of five to zero. In closed session, the board considered a statement of charges against a classified employee and took action to approve those charges and release employee number 635849 by a vote of five to zero. In closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee and took action to approve those charges and release employee 656230 by a vote of five to zero. In closed session, the board considered a loss of credentialed against a certified probationary employee and took action to approve the release of employee 654918 with an effective date of December 16th, 2023 by a vote of five to zero. In closed session, the board took action to approve the recommendation for appointment of Stephanie Higginbotham as Felicita Elementary School Principal beginning January 8th, 2024 by a vote of five to zero. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone, board members, Dr. Hvarra. I humbly accept this position of Felicita Elementary Principal. Seven and a half years ago, Marty Heranek was the one who took me out of the classroom and made me a site coach and ultimately set me on the trajectory that led me to this day. So the fact that he's the one handing his keys over to me is truly a full circle moment and very special. I'd like to thank Dr. Hvarra and Dr. Philia for giving me this opportunity. Thank you to my family who joins me today, and I just want to acknowledge that it's been a year and a half since I've been in ESD, and I am so excited to rejoin this organization and reconnect with so many of you that I know. I can't wait to meet my Felicita family and so excited to see you Bobcats. Thank you so much.
Congratulations again. Finally, in closed session, the board took action to approve the recommendation for transfer of Crystal Underhill from Central Elementary School Principal to LR Green Elementary School Principal beginning January 8th, 2024 by a vote of five to zero. Congratulations to Crystal. All right. Item C5, we need a motion to approve this evening's agenda. Move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor by raising hands. The motion passes five to zero. Thank you. And item C6, the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of November 16th.
Move approval of the November 16th minutes. What minutes?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please vote. Let it be reflected that it passes five to zero. All right. Item D1, the election of President of the Board of Education. I will entertain a motion.
So we still do the election? Okay. Nominate Frank Houston to be President.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Harper? We have a motion and a second. All in favor by raising hands. The motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, Frank. The meeting is yours, Frank.
All righty. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate the board's confidence in my upcoming year. I hope we will do great things together.
We had the choice, Frank.
You did. You didn't say no. You didn't say no. Okay. I'll do my best. So we are going now to do the election for the Vice President. I need a motion.
I move for Joan Gardner to be Vice President of the Board.
I'll second.
All righty. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you so much for your confidence.
We also need the appointment of clerk.
A motion that Doug Paulson serves as clerk of the Board of Education.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor? Passes five to zero. Congratulations. And D4, appointment of the Superintendent as Secretary to the Board of Education.
I'll met that motion.
I'll second.
All right. Motion and a second. All in favor? Passes five to zero.
Congratulations, Elise.
In D5, we are going to approve the school board meeting for 2024. Is there any changes or concerns that we have or want to talk about prior to?
Yeah, no, I know.
There will be one for me in October because I will be out of the country from the 6th of October to the 5th of November.
I think that that disqualifies you from being President. I have to go back to Mark.
Who had voted?
So that's two. It's one meeting and a study session. So we may want to move the October 10th to the...
You're at from the 5th?
Yeah. We can move it to the previous, I'm sorry, the 8th of October.
Could we just move the September meeting to the end of the month and then combine the end of September with the October meeting?
To the 26th.
Sometimes I have to miss a meeting.
Yeah, but that's okay. Joe, you're doing a great job. You just can't.
No, I won't.
Okay, so...
That's my birthday week.
You still have to make cheesecake.
All right, so we're going to get it as is? Okay. So I do need a motion?
I move approval of the calendar for 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Passes five to zero. And we have the 2024 Board Committee assignments. Dr. Barbar.
Okay, so I believe we have for teacher, new teacher induction advisory board, I believe Mark and Zesty would be alternate, and I've requested that.
Yeah, because the meetings for the nets are the same time as the district insurance committee, so I could be the alternate, but both of those meetings listed.
January 10th.
The committee is at the same time.
Okay. I should be there.
Yeah.
So then we have Delact rotating. I've got people signed up. Every spot is taken. District Insurance Committee, I believe, Zesty is interested in Joan wishes to continue.
And Zesty's currently...
Currently, okay, so wishing to continue. Then we have City School Subcommittee continuing with Zesty Mark.
So can I just make a point about that? Normally, we've had the President represent the Board.
So I mean, I know it's desirable to be on, but I think if possible, that you'd really be the President.
I could step off of it because I think Mark's more knowledgeable of city going on, so if Mark wants...
I'm not so sure that's a good thing, but...
I think it is a great thing, so I'm happy to step down and not make a three o'clock meeting every year.
Four times a year.
Four times a year, yeah. Okay. All right, I'll put down Frank.
There's one tomorrow. Do you want to go to tomorrow?
Do you think you... City Schools?
Tomorrow at 3:00.
I have a safety committee at 3:30.
I got a plane to catch. Okay. I'll cover for you tomorrow.
I think you have a plane to get here.
I do have a plane. I'm literally going to leave from there.
That's dedication.
Okay, then we have Gate Collaborative. There's Joan is on there, and there's still room for one more board member, and that's February 6th and April 23rd for the Gate Collaborative. I think we have two spots.
You can put me down.
Okay. All right, then we have Safety Committee. Frank continues. Design Team, we have Joan and Doug on Design Team.
Continuing.
Continuing.
Someone else wants to jump in, but I'd like to...
No, you're good.
SPECT Council, Doug wishes to continue. And then we have all the other rotating meetings. We have spots. So that's the slate.
I'll make a motion to approve the assignments as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It passes five to zero. D1, Dr. Barra.
Yes, in recognition of our Bureau Board President, Mr. Olson, we have a small token of our appreciation.
It doesn't look bad.
Box of chocolates.
Oh.
Wow. This is quite fancy here.
All right.
Must be a special presidential.
Presidential box.
Oh, it is a gavel.
It is a gavel.
It's gavel. So you can practice at home.
That's right. They don't have to give it up. Good. Well, thank you. I'm not sure if this is the time, but it'll take a few moments. Thank you, Dr. Barra, Dr. Philia, the Cabinet, all the staff that have been here, and to my board colleagues. What a great, it's been a great year. We've done a lot of good things. It's been a privilege to serve in this capacity. I appreciate the support that each of you have provided, and to all the staff that make these meetings run. I know there are several here, but there are also many, many, many staff as well as employees, teachers. I've appreciated the representatives from the associations that have expressed kind words, and it's been a privilege to work with them and be on the receiving end of the respect, even though at times there's been disagreement. It's been a very respectful tone. I really appreciate their contributions to our district, and I would be remiss, there's three young people that are sitting here. Those are my children that still live with me. I drug them here, but also, you know, because my wife sadly is a, she was on a plane today, but they've had to share their dad with the district for the past three years, and I appreciate them sacrificing that as well as my wife who supports me at times during this process. So I want to give them a little bit of recognition, although I'm sure they're going, wow, we're the only ones here. But I appreciate them, and I want to at least recognize them because they do do a great job of understanding when I can't be at certain things that are important to them. So just a quick recognition to them, and again, thank you to the staff and all those who have made this past year. It's been a privilege and an honor to serve in this capacity. I know Frank is going to take it to a new level, and I'm very excited for his opportunity to serve in this capacity.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
No cards.
No cards, okay. We also have the public hearing to adopt the statutory school fees and mitigation payments report. We're going to open up that meeting. Do we have any comments?
No comments.
Okay, we are going to close that meeting. Is California School Employees Association...
No, no report from them.
None? Okay, AAA also none?
Also no report.
Okay. Any written communication? They've all been handed out?
I'll distribute it.
Outstanding. Quickly moving on, we're going to go to the consent items. Is there anything that anyone wants to pull or have any type of discussion on? No? Okay, I need a motion.
I move that the board approve the list of consent items in G.
I'll second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor? Passes five to zero. So since we had the meeting earlier that we closed, we now need to do an adoption of Resolution 20232406 for the statutory school fees and mitigation payment report in action.
So annually, we must report this out to the public, all of the, more commonly referred to as developer fees, that we've received from the community, and then also the use of those fees. And then that report with the public hearing earlier, given the public an opportunity to comment on that if they see fit, and at this time, being there's no comments, that we would just ask the board to adopt that resolution, accepting the report.
Okay, so I will move approval of Resolution 202324 Statutory School Fees and Mitigation Payments Report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is this by Roca or just by, no, this is not...
No, this is by majority.
All approved, and it passes five to zero. Additionally, we have the adoption of Resolution 202324-11 Transportation Shortage Driver Shortage.
So a while ago, the board, if you recall, adopted a resolution declaring a state of emergency of sorts for transportation services as we had driver shortages, high demand, and not a lot of supply of that. This resolution somewhat refreshes that, but then gives it an end date. The original resolution didn't have an ending date, and so with this resolution, that would come to an end at the end of this fiscal year. We are in the process of the bidding process and developing our vendors so that next year we would have a much stronger slate of that. We feel like that emergency at that point would likely be over. Of course, if things change in the world, we would come back before the board and ask for that resolution again if needed, but at this point, we feel that at the end of this year, we would be in a much better standing. So this is just to adopt it for the current year and with an end date of the end of the year.
So this 150 is on top of what, 400 or so we already spend on the busing? This is in addition to what we already have?
Yeah, we spend more than $150,000 on home to school transportation.
But this is just, this is just for the 150?
For the remainder of the year.
Okay.
So I need an action of motion?
A motion to approve Resolution 202324-11 as presented by staff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Passes five to zero. We also have the award of the request for the proposal number 202407, Mission Middle School Phase III to Lusardi Construction Company.
So we went through an exhaustive process to bid out the, for lease leaseback labor for constructing the modular building that we've already by board action have purchased as well as the site work and all the other things that we have to do to get that site up to speed to accommodate that modular building, which would also include field work, infrastructure, that sort of thing. The dollar amount in here refers to the preconstruction services fee, and then what we would do next with this contractor, if this were approved, would then be to enter negotiations for that guaranteed maximum price that we would bring back before the board to adopt that, and then we would begin the work on the Mission Phase III project. And so this is requesting that the board approve the contract with Lusardi Corporation, who was, came out on top and through the process that we went through.
And what's your estimated completion date then, if it all goes to time?
I'm getting my years mixed up. Roy, is it...
Hopefully, the summer of 2025, since we've got all these good guys like you that are going to be in the new building and to finalize it. Solar and all of the parking.
Okay.
So fall of '25, we should be able to move in.
Okay.
I need a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Passes five to zero. And the next, oh, four, first interim budgets. Yes, sir.
More official up there.
Yes.
So tonight, we are going to be presenting the first interim budget report, which is really a summary of our first interim update to the adopted budget that we adopted in June, and that with the action associated with this, we'd be basically re-adopting our budget with these updates that are current as of October 31st of this year. First, I'd like to thank the fiscal team that's led by Michelle Kegel, our Director of that department. I believe this is your first first interim. Wow. And the team that she leads and all the work, it's really a truly an all hands on deck process to gather all of this information, all of the many thousands of lines of financial transactions that we manage. And so thank you, Michelle, and to your team for putting this together for me to present tonight. So first, this was the adopted budget that I alluded to earlier. Back in June, the board took action to adopt this for the current year, and this is the updated version of the current year's budget with current, the actual spending that we've done up to this point, so we've updated that, and then using that also to project forward. So this is how we would project to end the current year as it stands as of October 31st. So certainly, there's been new information since then, but the rules of the first interim is that it's cut off as of October 31st. Here's the changes between the two, as I always do the math for everyone, and before we linger too long on trying to figure out all those numbers, let's just talk about those changes and what's driven those changes. So first, we'll highlight the combined revenue. So in this case, it's showing an increase of $12 million in revenue, but as you can see, the unrestricted column is a negative 1.7 million, and the restricted is 14 million more. Let me just speak to that, that most of that is related to the ESER capital projects that we had slated that began in most cases last fiscal year but didn't complete in that fiscal year, and so we have to move the rules for that funding, is we have to move the expense and the revenue into the year that we expended, and so that's what you're seeing there is that we took money that we were, we didn't get to spend last year, and we finished those projects in the current year. So the money moved into the current year. The negative 1.7 there, that will be related to a decrease in LCFF revenue. We could talk a lot more about that in some future slides. A decrease in the estimated home to school transportation revenue that we get. Now, the state came up with a new formula to fund home to school transportation. We did use what we understood to be that, and then working through the calculators we get mostly from the state to determine that revenue, it's a different number, so we expect to have clarity on that at second interim, what that revenue actually will be, but that's all tied, wrapped up in that negative 1.7 million dollars you've seen the unrestricted. We move into our expenses. Again, the bulk of this is related to moving the ESER capital projects. We had to move the revenue and the expense from last year into the current year, and that makes up a large portion of that change there in the restricted column. The unrestricted has a large increase of expenses there as well, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in the next little thing that comes up. But first, also, some of the restricted spending beyond that ESER movement is the spending down of some of our one-time monies, projecting to spend more of like, for instance, our ELAP monies, things like that that live in our restricted column. And again, this is reflective of where we expect to end the year, not necessarily what we spent up to this point, but up to this point plus what we project to spend by the end of the year. And also just any other staffing changes that we've made since the beginning of the year, as we got schools started, all of that would be reflected in those expenses. So the increase in red expenses in the unrestricted, there of 8.6, about 7 million plus of that is actually derived from this contribution change that we made. And so we had an opportunity, working with our auditors in the county office, to something called the maintenance of effort. And so when we spend a certain amount of money on our special education program in a given year, it kind of, it locks in an amount of maintenance of effort, and we have to keep that maintenance of effort. But we had an opportunity to change some of the expenses instead of it coming out of the special ed funding back into the unrestricted column. Contributions generally are made, it's an investment we make from our unrestricted general fund into the restricted where our special education program expenses live. In this case, we were able to transfer out about $7 million of those back into the unrestricted column, and that's why you see the expenses is also grown and the contributions has grown. But you see there's, that those two things offset, and I want to point out, I didn't put a highlighted color around it, but that net change of 3 million, that's really driven by that revenue change of negative, and some of those expenses not related to the contribution. So overall, it looks like a large increase, but overall, it really was a net change only of $3 million because of that maneuver we did. That gives us more flexibility in the future for controlling our maintenance of effort and maintaining some cost controls around those programs. Does that make sense? Practice that all day. Okay. Any other questions on the changes from adopted to first interim here before we dive into some meatier topics? Okay. So here's something that I haven't shown in one of these presentations before. I always like to bring something new, and so this time, I, there's been some changes, a lot of things in the news around the state budget that has driven some changes to our multi-year projections for the next two years. And so I wanted to start off by talking about the assumptions that we use to develop our multi-year projections. And so I'll walk you through the construction of this for the current year. Not a lot of changes here for the current year, but that'll help us to understand what I'm going to show for the next two. So first, you have the top line, that's our COLA, the Cost of Living Adjustment. That's really the mechanism that the state uses to drive up or down funding, not just for education, but for us specifically, that would be driving up and down our funding. We also have our enrollment there. There is a change on that from adopted, which was built on our projected enrollment for the current year, and then as we got in, the kids all showed up to school. Well, about 289 of them that we thought were going to come didn't, and so that enrollment number is down. And then ADA, which is actually what's used to derive or calculate our funding, we expected to have a 91% attendance rate this year. As of October 31st, again, that's an important point here, we did project that that might actually go up to 92. Now, those two numbers together, ADA and enrollment together, that change, that drop in enrollment, but that increase in ADA, more or less create about a $400,000 round number revenue impact. And you'd see that, the actual numbers, it's all mixed into that current year first interim update. You're going to see some larger changes as we go into the next couple of years. And then just for perspective's sake, again, we're funded on the average number of students that show up on a given day over the course of our, the bulk of our school year, and per one of those students on average school day that show up, we get, as of now, $14,000 per average daily attendance. Okay, so now let's dive into the next two years. It's going to be... It's going to be, inform us for when we show you the actual multi-year projection. So as you've heard in the news, there's been a lot of talk about the state budget deficit, and it's grown almost every day over the last week. And I think it's over $60 billion at this point. And there's also been a calculation that's been released by the Legislative Analyst Office. So that's a team of people, a department at the state that costs out all the different things that the legislature, the governor proposes, that sort of thing. And a calculation that's based on what the governor does, but a calculation based on economic factors, is actually projected that the COLA that was projected to be 3.94 at our adopted budget in June, when the state adopted their budget, they're saying that calculation now looks like it's closer to 1%. Now, at the time of October, when we were looking at this, before some of that news came out, certainly not good, we knew that there was going to be a bit of a drop in, in the COLA based on their projections at that time. And that's where we, we built this multi-year projections on an assumption of a 3% COLA for next year. That comparing to the 3.94 that it was in June generates about a $1.7 million drop in LCFF revenue. Round numbers, again, the actual numbers are all mixed in together in the MYP. But isolating that variable, it's about a $1.7 million drop in revenue. Enrollment, as we continue to see enrollment decline, and that's starting to rear its head again here in our district, as it has for many years before this, the, also the ADA. So those two numbers go together, right? We're funded on the ADA, not on enrollment. Interesting, we staff our classrooms up to enrollment, but then the state funds us on our average daily attendance. So that's why it's so vitally important, not only for the learning that comes in our classrooms, but for the funding that supports that learning. But because of our attendance as it looks at this point, we're, we were projecting our attendance at adopted to be 95% attendance rate, we've dropped that expectation to 94. That drop of 1% plus the enrollment decline there, those two things work together. But in round numbers, it's about a $2 million drop in expected revenue. And, but though there is a COLA greater than zero, so the, the amount we get per ADA in that year for next year, we expect to be where we stand now, about $14,500 per ADA. And really, the COLA impacts that amount we get per student, and then that rolls up into all the other calculations to determine revenue. So now we look at the third year, the 25-26 projected year. Now, the COLA stays the same from adopted to now, because there's no talk about what that might be in that two years from now. They're only talking about the COLA for next year. So at this point, we don't have an expectation of the COLA changing in any way. We would know more about that at this time next year for the 25-26 year. But because they dropped the COLA, we're expecting the COLA to drop next year, that plays out over all the years after that. And so there's another, our budget, when multi-year projection budget in the adopted budget was built on a 3.94 expectation of COLA next year. That dropping to three in these calculations, that loss of revenue continues in every year after that. And so for that third year, there's another $1.8 million drop in revenue for that year. And then the ongoing enrollment decline, plus the drop in ADA of that 1%, also comes together to about a $1.8 million drop in revenue based on student attendance and enrollment. And in that year, though, $15,000 would be what we would get per student in ADA. So when you hear that, you know, a number of kids on a given day that show up to school, each one of those, on average, that is worth $15,000 over the course of the year, on an annual basis. Okay. Is there any questions on this? This is a new pathway I've kind of described here, and what builds our MYPs. Any questions on this before I dive into the actual multi-year projections? A lot of numbers, I apologize. This is what we do all day. So there's our first interim, as we showed before, as it stands now. And now remember that $3 million increase to the deficit that we showed in those changes, that now went from the seven, we started with our adopted budget up to 10 there. Walking you through this, in the bottom there, we have our ending fund balance, it's 39 million. Part of that is the minimum reserve requirement we have, and the state has a 3, the board has adopted a 4%. So that together is about a $12.7 million reserve, our minimum requirement there. The commitments there still includes, there was the Mackenzie Scott donation. But way back before that, we actually, the board adopted a commitment of 4 million additional dollars as well. So that's still shown here as a commitment. We'll talk more about that and the investment of the Mackenzie Scott later on, you'll see where that comes out. And then there's the assigned reserve there, and that's the money beyond, that's in our ending balance, that's beyond commitments, beyond the state minimum reserve. Okay, so now let's get into what those assumptions I talked about in the previous slide do to next year in our revenue and expense expectations. And so this next year, we show a deficit now of 5.6 million. Now, included in that 5.6 million is also an expectation that, let me walk you back to the current year, even to last year. Carrying from last year into this year, we brought over about $5.5 million of unspent supplemental concentration dollars. That's what we commonly would call our LCAP. We have to budget that by law, the entirety of our current allotment for the annual basis, and also any carryover from the previous year. So we have an expectation that we bring carryover over, we can budget that only one time, right? That's, that's the money left over from last year, it's not an ongoing resource. And so this next year, the assumption is that, that additional 5.5 million of carryover has already been spent, and it doesn't exist in this. And so that's why the deficit is at 5.6 million here. If we brought that, if we continue to budget up to the full amount plus the carryover, that amount would go up by another $5.5 million. Track that so far. Now, on the bottom, we still show the reserve and the commitments. And then above and beyond those is 1.3 million. Now, in those commitments, there's 4 million that's not related to the Mackenzie Scott donation. And so if needed, obviously, we would come back before the board and ask the board to decommit that or to recommit it towards something else. But overall, above and beyond that donation, there's about $5.3 million in the ending balance above and beyond the reserve in the next year. The next year after that, the 25-26, oh, before I get to that, my little green box there, I was highlighting the amount of money above and beyond the commitments and the reserve. So then we go into the 25-26 year with all the assumptions we spoke about earlier, I showed you earlier. That takes us all the way down to the bottom. Now, we've made an assumption that we're going to ask the board to be able, let us, allow us to use that 4 million of commitments towards our budget. And with that being done, we have $1 million above and beyond our reserve, minimum reserve requirement. Okay? And of course, those Mackenzie Scott donation is still sitting there. So at that point, we have, if Mackenzie Scott goes into an investment, we would have the minimum reserve of 11.9 million and an additional 1 million above that. So that's getting very close to our minimum reserve requirement in the 25-26 year. Does anybody have any questions about the multi-year projection as it stands now for the first interim? And this is the multi-year projection that was in the budget book, that's in the, up on our agenda. And this is part of the action item that we've been asking the board to adopt as our updated budget here in December. Is there any questions about this one so far?
Just briefly, the reserve, we've got a 4% reserve. The required reserve is 3%, isn't it? So we already have 1% over.
Right. If we were to change that 4 to 3, that would be a one time, I'm not asking, I'm not asking you to do that at all. But just for clarification for anybody who might be watching in the audience at home, if we were to reduce that from 4 to 3, that would be a one-time extraction of money from that. We don't put 4% every year towards it, we just have to maintain at least 4% of our expenses as our reserve. So changing that to 3 would net us maybe a million dollars one time.
And that million dollars could disappear very quickly.
In a district of our size, absolutely.
Doesn't even cover a month's salaries.
The 4% doesn't even cover, yeah, doesn't even cover, I mean, that's barely a week's salaries and operational costs. So that's almost meaningless.
I didn't get the payroll number for every month to bring for you. That would be a good point to make here towards what you guys are discussing. They don't have that in front of me. Our, our monthly spend for.
I, I think that it, the, the amount of the monthly salary doesn't matter. The point is, that's not going to make it. So it's not like this reserve, no matter what it is, is going to tide us over for any length of time at all.
No, but you know, you know where the reserve comes in handy is in cash flow. Especially if they decide again to do deferrals, yeah.
And I would expect, looking at the, what we've been hearing in the news, that that could be very likely. Looking back at history, right before COVID, in the 1920 year, when the governor did his January proposal, that one, I believe, was originally going to be 2, or was that one negative 10? Either way, it came with cash deferrals, where they, they don't pay us in a few months, or they, what they, the, I forget what the saying is from, "I'll pay you for a hamburger today," or "I'll get a hamburger today, I'll pay you tomorrow." So they don't give us our disbursement of money for like the last three months of the year.
But we had to show it on our books.
But we still have to, right, we still have to show it, and then they pay us back next year, hopefully, for that. But certainly, that's, that's a mechanism the governor has at his disposal to balance the budget, especially given the large deficit. So that's something we have our eye on right now. Cash flow is absolutely very important.
So and then, I, I don't know about this 4 million dollar reserve, I think that was before my time.
The commitment?
The commitment, you raised.
It used to be 4.5%.
Well, the, the reserve, minimum reserve may have been, yeah, 4.5, but what, what you're asking about is the 4 million in commitments beyond the Mackenzie Scott. There was, because our ending balances were quite large, when we had a lot of influx of all the COVID money, the state also at that point made, it activates a law where if there's, if the state budget's at a certain point of health, that it caps what our ending balance can be, is 10% of our expenses, except for commitments. Those don't count towards that calculation. And so if we have additional monies in our ending balance above 10%, at that time, we did, and we had about 4 million more than the 10%, and we asked the board to commit that in order for us to stay below that 10% threshold. We're well below the 10% at this point.
Okay, but that's something we can discuss before we actually move it to our.
Yes.
Okay.
And in fact, as I described here, for this year and next year's fiscal solvency, it can remain as a commitment. And we'd still, if nothing else changes, and there's only a 3% COLA, not a 1%, then that could stay. Now, if the financial situation changes and the COLA goes below 3%, we would definitely be having that conversation at our second interim.
It's like a safety.
Yeah. But again, just the point of 12 million as the reserve of 4% isn't going to get as far, 4 million isn't either.
No, that's right.
But it's something.
Right, okay.
Better than nothing.
So I'm going to show you now what the multi-year projection could look like if what the Legislative Analyst Office says is the calculated COLA of 1%. And that's what the next MYP will look like based on that. So the first, the current year stays the same. But next year, a 1% COLA would drive our deficit up nine, to $9 million, an additional $4 million of revenue loss based on the COLA drop to 1% from the 3. Now, you can see there, we're still fiscally solvent, but there are no more commitments. Now, in this case, and I will tell you, take an opportunity here, the Mackenzie Scott actually, as of October 31st, was in the Treasury, which is why it's shown on the official first interim. But at this point, this is more of a pro forma, so we can talk beyond October 31st. That's actually in our holding account now, and it's being prepared for investment in the next couple of few days. Actually, it should be into the Treasury bonds as we presented that investment plan that we presented before and the board approved. So it's removed from here in the commitments, but so is that other 4 million. And that's really necessary in a 1% COLA for next year environment, because you can see that our ending balance now only has the minimum reserve of 4% and additional 1.6 million for next year. And the following year, that number here turns to red, because that negative number signifies that we would not be able to meet our minimum reserve requirement. The minimum reserve being 11.9 in that year, we, ending balance would only be 5.6 million if the state gave us a 1% COLA for next year. And that's all because the original projections for next year and the year after was a 3.94% COLA and a 3.29% COLA. If they draw, and we built our whole budget, our expenses and our planning and every investment we make on that, if they drop that below that projection, this is what it does. We were actually looking at this earlier, that when we watched the governor's proposal, and it's supposed to be on January 10th, and you're hearing for that COLA number, if it's 3.94, that's where we already adopted our budget, that, that would be the best news, right? I don't expect it to be higher. But if it's anything less than 3, that box turns red in that third year. Now, that is a good measure right there of our fiscal solvency, in that we wouldn't be able to pay.
That we wouldn't have fiscal solvency.
Yeah, we would lose our fiscal solvency status at that point if they were to go to a 1% COLA without further budget reductions.
And so would, so would most school districts in California.
Which, again, you know, if you look at it, the Governor Newsom is obviously trying to grow his political star. This is not good timing to have such large budget deficits. There's a rainy day fund, they have, okay, so they have about, was it $68 billion now is the most current deficit number I think we were talking about earlier. The rainy day fund they put aside through all the COVID money and stuff is 30 billion. So it's fair to say that if they dumped out all of their reserve that they built up, we're still going to see a cut in our COLA.
And if they dumped it all out in one year, then.
What happens the year after that?
Exactly. And what's really disturbing is the fact that they restricted school districts from having more than a 3%.
More than 10%.
No, I think it's 3.
Well, the 3 is the minimum reserve, and we can adopt more than that. But the law, because of all the, the state budget was so healthy, capped it at 10. So even if the board took action and said, "We want a 15% reserve," for instance, that would not be lawful. We would have to do commitments to get there, and that's definitely a way we could work around that. But they were capping the reserves at, at 10% when, during a time when, you know, money was coming from the federal government.
And basically said, "Don't worry about it, we'll take care of it with our rainy day fund."
Right.
Yeah.
But we had deficits similar to this at the state level, but right before COVID. And that's why they were doing cash deferrals and having a potential 10, negative 10% COLA. It didn't calculate, economic factors didn't say negative 10% to the cost of living. That's just what the state can use to modulate funding up or down, is, is that number. So I don't expect the governor to get away with a 1% COLA, but the way that the money is in the state budget, I don't know what it can be. But if it's anything less than 3, that box turns red. It's a lower number, it's a, it's a, it's a higher number if it's a negative number, right? My math teacher wife at home would be angry at me if I called that a lower number. It would be a higher number, let's say it's just below 3, we might get up to about negative 2. But still not meeting our reserve and not being fiscally solvent. And the county office wouldn't allow us to adopt that budget unless we provided them with a list of budget reductions to get that number to at least 0. So that's our outlook for, so when you're watching the governor's proposal on January 10th, there's a lot of big numbers, they talk about the statewide level, but one number that can, that we know how it applies to us and as I'm explaining here, is that COLA number. So listen for that. If it's anything less than 3, then we're going to have some work to do further than we already do.
You know, even, even that might be rosy, because the real proof is in the May revise. That's when they, they have to be more honest about the outlook.
Yeah, so after the January proposal, the legislature all has their say, all the different lobbying groups, obviously. And there can be a lot of fluctuation between January and May. But yeah, so when May comes out too, that could change things. Now, during the 1920 year, COVID happened, they hadn't all had the money come out yet, so they were still talking about deferrals. But then as we got into the next year, which for us was the 2021 fiscal year, that's when a lot of the ESAR monies first started coming out, and all of a sudden, deferrals went away, and the budgets were all growing. But now we're past that money coming out, so.
And you'll recall, in, in that year, we actually took budget reductions to the board, and we use the strategy, if we need to reduce, let's say, 8 million, if you do that a whole, over two years, if you do that immediately, then you only have to cut 4 million, and it compounds every year. So 4 million turns to 4 million and 4 million, and then third year is 12 million. So we use that as a strategy. So there's work ahead of us, but we really just need to see what the actual COLA number is, the preliminary, what the governor's proposal. That'll set us in motion to some, some good discussions about really prioritization. And that's where we're going to rely on data, rely on what are those things that we, that we absolutely have to do? And then what are those programs that we want to make sure that are meeting the needs of our kids?
And the sooner we act, react, the, the less severe, the less painful it will be in the long term, which is something we have to bring across. which is something we have to bring across.
Right, and across these multi-year projections, these, these out years, we call them, the next year and the year after, most all of that ESTER money expires, spent down and expires this year. So that's all kind of included in our out-year projections as well, of our expenses, is not having that money anymore. So, yes, there's a lot of work to be done going forward in prioritization. We do, I'll talk about it later briefly, but it's a good point to bring up that we do have our February workshop that we're going to devote to the budget planning with the board here in public. Okay, any other questions about this right here? Okay. So now, I have the average daily attendance year-over-year chart that we show in every budget presentation that we've done, predating me. I did cut off some of the years long ago, make that chart a little smaller, and just, we can go through the, the mechanics of it, but what you see here is, you know, the yellow bar is our actual ADA, the red being what we're funded on. Now, our funding and ADA is derived from formulas, so it's one of two different formulas, whichever is the better for us. In this case, we use what's the three-year average, so it's the average ADA over the previous three years, the average funded ADA. And then, there's also the other formula is the greater of the current year or last year's enrollment. And so, right now, we're on the three-year average for this year, but you can see in the funded ADA and the actual ADA chart on the right there, the 24-25 year next year, those two numbers are the same, because actually, in that case, because we're projecting a 94% ADA versus the 92 this year, that we would use the greater of the two to change our funding formula over to that. And that all can change depending on the current factors as we update this at each range terms in an adopted budget. So that's where we stand now, projecting forward. But I wanted to get into more of, like, real time, and let's get a perspective on what's happening in the current year, and it's another thing that we, that's new in this presentation. And so, let me walk you through this chart here. At first, it's, it's somewhat daunting, which you have all the grade levels that we serve here in EUSD, and we have our last year enrollment for each of those grade levels, and then we have the current year enrollment for each of those grade levels. The call in returning student loss is actually the 12 that you see there for, for first grade, that's in, for last year's kindergartners, we have 12 more of them that went to first grade than we had as kindergarten last year. Does that make sense? And then, in the reverse, we lost about 89 kids going from fifth grade to middle school across the district. So that's how that chart kind of works. So just to give a perspective on when we have enrollment loss, where are we losing it? And we definitely are losing it on the, I would say, we're weighted heavily on the older side towards middle school. Okay, and then this one, is somewhat of a more, I would say, our current, 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 now this goes beyond October 31st. So, this is our ADA rate by elementary and middle, and then as overall as a district, they're all very similar in that. We started off the year, and this is why we adjusted our, our ADA projections from 91 to 92 for the current year, we started off the year upwards 93 and a half as a district, and that, you know, continued to stay above 93 into month two, so month one's August, month two being September. October, it dipped, it gets closer to 93, but then November, you can see that it drops way off. Now, our interim is based on up to October 31st, so it does not include the information we have for November. So this is giving us kind of an early sign of things to come, maybe. Now, it's also, we have Thanksgiving break, we have the cold and flu season, as we know, is going around a lot right now, and that all starts to really pick up steam in November. December is very much similar to that, I would expect the rates to stay about the same. In fact, just to give a perspective on the last two days, if we take the absences the last couple of days, Monday, we had an 88% ADA rate. So we had about 1,600 kids absent, translated to about 88% ADA. And yesterday, or today was a 90% ADA day, about 1,300 kids absent today. So, it's vitally important that our students come to school every single day in order to, again, for the learning and for the funding. So, I expect, based on how we started the year, it was the best start we've had for several years in ADA rate for those first three months, that once we get past the, the winter break and past cold and flu season, and get back into the warmer months, that we will see that pick back up and, and get us back to the, the 92 that we projected in the year. Any questions on this current information as it is now? So our conclusions then, summarizing our entire budget at the first interim, is we are recommending a positive certification, because again, with the assumptions we built into our multi-year projections as of October 31st, we have more money in our ending balance than our required reserve, and so that would signal us to be, have a positive certification of our budget. But again, we're going to continue to, to focus on what the governor's proposal is, what the state's funding levels are going to be for public education next year, and that's going to drive any decisions we make as we go into the budget workshop, and also our second interim in our adopted budget for next year. State funding and student attendance are really the two big challenges for us. I mean, not only cutting the amount we get per student ADA, but having less ADA to apply that to, it's a double whammy of impact. So that's going to continue to be a focus for us. But, we're going to continue to prioritize fiscal solvency in all of our decision-making, so that we can continue to work towards our vision of actualizing the limited potential of every learner. Be it in class every day or not, we're still going to do everything we can to help all the kids here of up to eighth grade in Escondido realize their future. And our next steps, like I said, governor's budget proposal, January 10th. We actually come back before you in January meeting as well, our auditor does actually, and presents the audit report for the 22-23 fiscal year. We'll finally be able to put that one to bed, and then, like I said, we'll have a budget workshop in February, and I'm sure it will have lots of good conversation based on what we, we learned here today, and what we'll find out in January from the governor. Questions or comments?
Ms. Harper?
Um, yes, thank you for the presentation, and thank you, Michelle, for you and your department, I'm sure that was a ton of work. And it never ends, never ends. I, I'm, I mean, I am very concerned about our structural deficit. I mean, I understand we're coming out of COVID, but I feel like we had a lot of COVID money, and piggybacking on Joan's point, the, the sooner we address it, I think the sooner we can correct and ease that transition. I would really love to see us getting in the weeds during this budget workshop, or even before it, because I feel like, at least I do, is like that we only get certain glimpses at the budget, certain decision-making processes, and I really want to go, like, go back to the foundation of, you know, the district, and what our priorities are, and what that means at a site level, at a grade level. Because, I mean, I would love to see staffing levels compared to when we had 17,000 kids to, compared to now, when we only have, you know, 13,000 kids. Are we at the same, you know, what, what's our support look like? Because obviously, there's going to have to be cuts, unfortunately, but how can we do that in a, a productive way to really set this district up to continue the success? But I'm, I'm so excited about our iReady test results that, you know, I can't, I can't wait for them to come out, but you said they're starting to take them, what, in December? I'm like, I want to see all, you know, see if our hard work and what we've put our efforts to have really made an impact. And I think that will dictate a lot of how we move forward with this budget. But again, I would really like to go in depth and look at the overall structure, and really look at what, you know, what the basic are requiring, and then where are our priorities for that? Which I know that's what we do anyway, but I think this is a great opportunity to work on the foundation of the district, and really, really make it strong, and, I mean, we're going to have a, I'm sure, we're going to have an economic downturn to really get our foundation right, so we can weather the storm that we know is coming, without a learning loss for our students, without as much disruption to the staff. Because we need to reward our staff as well. I mean, with a 1% COLA, I never, I didn't go to the grocery store this week and only see a 1% increase. So, I mean, we have to be there for our staff, and I think budgeting in the deficit and budgeting right up to the line doesn't allow us to be there as much as we should. Uh, let's see, but I would like to, but again, I would like to get in the weeds in that. And then also, kind of on a side note, and I don't know if this is something we have, but is, can we get a summary of like what we spent all of the COVID money on, with all the, like, all the projects and all the staffing, just to kind of get an idea? Because I know it was a lot of money, I'm just not a, not a priority or anything, but just.
We, we keep, we keep tabs on that all the way through.
Yeah, because I just be, I would like to, like you said, you know, a lot of our bond money that we had said, you know, that bond money was going to go to projects, and you said the ESTERs covered a lot of it. You know, I kind, I would kind of like to see the big picture of how we spent that money, and, and if it was fruitful, and if it made a difference. Because really, what, I mean, I think that's our job, is to look at the money spent, and is it impacting the students? Is it improving their education? Is it providing a quality education for them? I think that's our responsibility, and that's what I want to keep digging into and making sure we are making the best, sorry, making the best decisions possible with it. But, thank you again for the presentation, I appreciate it.
And again, thank you for all of the hard work. I, I do have to agree that we're coming up on an economic downturn, and whether, whether it happens or not, doesn't matter. It really, we need to be prepared for it, and we need to prioritize our work to make sure that our framework for the future doesn't suffer if there is an economic downturn. I mean, it would be nice to have all the money in the world, but that's not going to happen, and so how can we, how can we strategically work to utilize any other sources of funding to make sure that our learning, our intervention programs, our enrichment programs continue with reduced funding, and I think they can. I, I would just agree with Ms. Harper, we do need to get into the weeds. I, I know staff is getting into the weeds of how to keep a focus on academic and personal growth for all students, and it just seems that we, we would like to have clarity for ourselves and for the public, I believe, on what that might look like. How might we do some of our interventions through our ELOP money in an after-school setting, rather than during the school day, as an example? How, what might that look like? And so, I just, we just need to make sure that we've got clarity. Yes, we may be going into an economic downturn, and no, it cannot impact, negatively impact student learning.
Ms. Gardner?
I've said what I needed to say, so.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
So we do have an action for the first interim report.
Oh, move to approve the 2023-24 first interim report.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Passes five zero. Moving on to the student expulsion case number 2023-2403, Mr. Paulson.
All right, on item 05, case number 2324-03, move for full expulsion through December 12th, 2024.
Oh, I'll, I'll second.
Okay, this is through roll call, Ms. Harper.
Aye.
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 Ms. Olson?
Aye.
And I vote aye, passes, carries five zero.
On item 06, case number 2324-04, move for full expulsion through 1212 of 24.
I'll second.
Through roll call, Ms. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Paulson?
Aye.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Ms. Olson?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries five zero.
On item 07, case number 2324-05, move for, to accept the panel's recommendation for full expulsion through December 12th, 2024.
I'll second.
All right, through roll call, Ms. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Olson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Ms. Olson?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries five zero.
On.
Oh.
Yes, I can.
No, I, I'll, I'll move it.
No, yes, I can, 07 I can, yes, I can. On item 08, case number 2324-07, move to reject the expulsion panel recommendation, move no expulsion, and.
That's it.
Understanding that we will offer the option of student moving to another school with possible inclusion in the track program if the parent chooses.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and Ms. Harper?
Okay, oh, aye.
Ms. Olson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Ms. Olson?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries five zero.
So on item 09232408, I move to accept the panel's recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second. Sorry.
Ms. Gardner, seconds, through roll call, Ms. Harper?
Aye.
Mr. Paulson?
Nay.
Ms. Gardner?
Aye.
Ms. Olson?
Aye.
And I vote aye, passes or carries four one. And going to the framework for the future.
Yes, we're asking the board to formally adopt the framework for the future, and so that we can, you have before, so we can use it as a tool for informing our community, our families, about the work that we're doing, and hopefully, with the metrics we have in place, we'll be able to have an annual report on a report to the community.
Do we have any questions? Yes.
So I move that the board approve the adoption of EUSD's framework for the future.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Passes five zero. Under human resources, assistant principal reclassification.
Hi, we're looking to consolidate the assistant principal classifications. We have an elementary and a middle school classification, and they were, when compared, they were identical. So we'd like there to now just be one classification for assistant principal.
My motion, we approve staff's recommendations.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Passes five zero. And next, human resources, management salary schedule revision.
And so then, at the same token, if there is only one classification, we're going to take the middle school salary scale and make that the salary scale for the administrative, or for the assistant principal.
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and approval, or a second, all in favor? Passes five zero. Okay, going to Q1, board members and board presidents' reports, Ms. Harper?
Thank you so much, President. Can we say, it's not appropriate to say new sheriff in town, but it's close, like a new officer in town, can we?
Something like that.
We're close, we're close.
We'll go with that.
Um, I, I only have one thing to report, I attended the CSBA annual convention up in San Francisco, whenever, a couple days, on the first. I'm not ever quite impressed with that convention, but it was fine. I mean, I got some good things out of it. I wanted to highlight a couple of good ideas. I think we are doing a great job here compared to some of, some of the ideas I heard at the other districts and some of the presentations. I think what we're doing is far and above what they have thought of, and what, how they're, how we're trying to innovate. I feel like some of them are still kind of stuck in the past. But some of the good things I heard were consistency is important, providing stability for students. You know, they, they come to school for a safe spot, and, you know, to have that adult makes a huge, a huge difference. One of the ideas for attendance was to look at the teachers with a high attendance rates, and so what are they doing differently than maybe somewhat, you know, another grade level or another teacher in that same grade? To really draw, I mean, obviously, we can't do anything about illnesses as much, but also, you know, what's different in their classroom to really attract kids and want them to come? There was a bunch of ideas for ChatGPT or AI, and one of the great ideas was math lessons, like they were personalizing them. So they would do the word problems with the student's name and like their favorite hobby in there, and like would come up with a bunch of math less, you know, I'm like, huh, hey, keep them engaged. I actually use ChatGPT. I actually used ChatGPT to create some study guides. I felt very technolit, technologically advanced for my fourth grader. She had a bunch of study guides, we put them in there. They pumped out a study guide, pumped out a bunch of practice tests, it was great. So she's been working all week for our finals. So I, I mean, it does have its advantages. Um, and then, um, they, they also, another priority was trainings for our classified employees because they are part of the overall education picture and how important that is. And I saw we were offering, was that in the Friday update? Pro Act, so it's just being offered to everyone, not everyone's going. Okay, all right. And then, again, that adult connection. Um, one of the superintendents, um, it's down in South County, but he has a very simple mission statement for the whole district. But part of that is preparing them for the workforce, which I think we need to focus back on. Is that, that's our job, is to create a good citizen who's able to have a productive life. Um, so that's great. And then the last thing is high expectations. Um, again, I don't think the solution is ever to lower the bar. I think it's always to keep the standard high and I think students will meet that, meet us there. Um, I was thinking this week of Hidden Valley. I mean, I think the new principal there has really raised the bar and the level of expectation. And I think those students are following, following in line. The staff is, you know, is part of that. Um, and, you know, we, we had that report years and years ago that you had commissioned on our district. Yeah, where it was, we don't need to lower the bar, they're very capable of doing that. And I think that's important for us to remember, that we, we need the high standards or otherwise we are doing them a disservice. So, otherwise, most of the same rigor and moral at that conference and other stuff that I don't like to hear, but that's my report, thank you.
Mr. Paulson?
So I also attended CSBA, I have a very different take on it. I always find a lot there, but the one thing I always find is that our district is on the cutting edge. Um, if you look at our framework for the future, we at a minimum, we have a learner profile, we have a plan for the future. You go up and down the state, and I visit a lot of schools, there are very, very few schools that have a crystal clear vision for their future, much less a plan for their future, a solid implementable plan for the future. So if nothing else, I like going to see SBA so I can look at us and say, wow, we're good and laugh at whoever else. Um, I also attended one workshop on artificial intelligence, um, although the one I attended was on how to detect it uh, when it's being used inappropriately. And that's was somehow more of my, my interest. Um, although, yeah, I, so, that is great. And I, but I do want to just reiterate what Ms. Harper is saying, and I know that everybody in this room agrees with it. Raise expectations, students will rise to the expectation. The worst thing we can do is overscaffold and provide excessive help and, you know, with all good intention, that really results in the dumbing down of the curriculum. So, uh, that is my report. Um, and, oh, one other thing, just really excited from the consent agenda to see that we are starting a partnership with the San Diego Legion Rugby Association, started yesterday at Farr Elementary and Orange Glen Elementary School. And the kids were out playing, it has made it on to Facebook already. Um, uh, yeah, and the, I am just very excited for where that partnership is going to lead our city. Those certain football coaches I know are concerned about it.
Oh, well, thank you for saving me from, from San Francisco. Sounds like I didn't miss too much, but, and you picked up what was important. In any case, in the meanwhile, I represented the board at the last D-LAC meeting, the District English Language Advisory Council meeting. And serendipitously, the topic of, the main topic of conversation was getting our attendance up and involving the parents in coming up with creative ideas. And they met in, in groups at various postings and, and wrote down their ideas. But what came out of it and, and what was a topic of discussion was the kids sometimes aren't getting enough sleep and they can't get up and get out to school in the morning because they're up in the middle of the night playing games on their cell phones. So, and we talked about cellphone usage and, and somehow, and even cellphone use, usage in the classroom and kids not being engaged in the classroom as well. So, um, I don't, do we have a policy on cell phones? Do they have, there was a, one complaint I read from a parent that said that her daughter wasn't allowed to use her cellphone in class, that it was taken. And I think that should be a policy. I mean, if, if, if a child needs to contact their parent or a parent needs to contact the child, it's always been, you call the school or the school calls the parent, that it doesn't necessarily have to be one-on-one because one, one parent was saying how they, the child was uncomfortable at school and was constantly texting the mother instead of paying attention in class. And, and that's not a rare circumstance, I would, I would tend to believe. That and the fact that, I think these kids also, we have to look at the parents and their, their fascination with their cell phones and lack of attention to the children. Sometimes I've seen them, when I, when I drive past Bernardo sometimes and the, and school's letting out and parents are on the way to pick their kids up and they, they've got a cellphone glued to their ear. And I don't think that gets put away once the, the kids are with them instead of engaging with them. I think a big part of attendance and interest in school comes from the parents' interest in school and, and their child's attendance and being excited about being, having their children in school and learning and transmitting that to their children. So I always, I always compliment and congratulate the parents who are involved at D-LAC, at DAC, at, at any of these committees because I know that their kids are fine for the most part because their parents care. So we need to reach out to the parents and get them more involved again, get them back because we pushed them away during COVID. And it's, it's hard now to bring them back totally. And that's my report.
Yes.
I forgot something in my report, I apologize. I wanted to thank Mr. Olson for, and I'm sure the three of us agree, for leading us fantastically this last year. I appreciate your, uh, efficient meetings and moving us along. I really do appreciate that, getting us out on time and just your calmness in the face of everything that we have to deal with on a, a daily basis. So thank you so much for your leadership, we appreciate it. And Frank, we're excited to see your spin on it. And I'm sure you will do a great job as well.
You've done a great job. Mark, the, the one thing is that still bothers me is this. I prefer to have all those in favor say, and all opposed say...
October tenth.
Well, I was promised eventually we'll get a screen and a button. We'll get there.
Oh, really?
Screen and a button.
I ended that conversation with him, I'll have to talk to Leonard about it.
You gotta finish this off.
I will.
We can't afford that. Not these times.
It can't be that expensive.
No.
It's gonna be an app on your phone, Joan.
There you go.
Well, then I'm out of luck. Better wait another three years.
We already have the screens and it's just a matter of the software, it's good.
Uh, no, uh, just a couple things, just to, to piggyback off what Joan said, the cellphone. I would encourage Leonard to look into Yonder Bags. It's a, it's a good, there's been studies on that, districts who implemented them and the testing and the scores have gone up. So I think that would be something, uh, that we should look into and, and draft some policy about that. Uh, but on that, I attended, represented the board at the PTA Council a few weeks back. It was great to spend a very well-attended council, I might add, here in the boardroom. I had some great questions I was able to field and, and share some things, not just about the district, but about some of the comings and goings within our community here and how that might impact our students and their families. So I appreciate all those who were in attendance and, and those that serve. Um, it was, it was a good meeting, it was good to be with them. Uh, and again, I just appreciate the opportunity to, to serve in this capacity. I'm excited for Frank and the, and next year and appreciate the support I felt from, from everybody in this room and throughout the district. It's great to, to, and I, and I love that we're moving around and that Frank gets to, to have this opportunity and, and we have a process in place for everyone to share their talents and abilities. So, uh, thank you and look forward to it.
And I do not have a report, I just wanted to also thank Mark for everything you've done and also wishing everyone a happy holidays. We're coming up on our Christmas and holiday season, so hopefully everybody will have a safe holiday and have an enjoyable time off. Well, I'm, I'm assuming that's very well needed at this point, especially for the staff and teachers and everyone, they're, they're ready for it. They're counting the days or the hours. So, uh, again, thank you to the board. I realize that, you know, you say it's a formality, but it's also an honor, I appreciate it. And I hope that I can rise to the occasion as a, and hopefully do as well as Mark did, at least. So.
At least.
At least, at least, at the very least. So thank you again, and Dr. Barbe?
Just, yes, just wanted to recognize the Escondido Education Foundation who had their Mark Heston Awards tonight due to our reschedingers of conflict. We, it was happening at the same time, but I did want to thank them and congratulate all, all the teachers and staff members who submitted a grant and were granted an award. So it's always fun to see that. And then happy holidays to everybody. This is definitely, everyone's ready for it. So a few more days and next week, and then we'll get there. That's it.
Anything from the Cabinet?
Just wanted to reiterate the invitation. Uh, we will have our first annual esports championship on Monday. It'll be over at Hidden Valley and it starts at four o'clock. So we're excited to see all of our middle school teams compete.
And thank you to the board for approving our contract to start our project over at Mission. Looking forward to having another, we just did the ribbon cutting at Del Dios. Uh, great project there, same contractor. We expect there to be a really large-scale improvement to Mission Middle School and all of the kids that it serves in, in that part of town. So really excited and thank you to the board for approving that.
And I wanted to thank you for approving our new principals. That's been kind of a work in progress and we have one more to go. And I'm excited to be here and let those principals shine in their new locations.
I guess this is a thing tonight, I just want to thank the board for all of your support and your confidence in all of us, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, and buttons, don't forget the buttons. That's something we need to work on. All right, announcement for our next meeting will be Thursday, January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four at seven PM, right here at the Estino Union School District, Carolyn Gerber Education Center. We are not going to be going into closed section, closed session. So there will not be a, a report, and we are officially adjourned for this meeting.
But we have another meeting?
Yes, we do, we have one more meeting to do.
What's the phrase you want me to use, Joan?
The facilities.
All right.
Wait, which gavel are you using?
I used my knuckles on that one. My mic's not working anymore. Okay, we will roll, uh, call this meeting of the Escondido Union School District School Facilities Corporation to order. Uh, we have a full quorum with all board members present. Do we have any comments? It appears not. Uh, item C-one, the election, uh, item C, election of the officers. So we now have to elect a president. I'll entertain a motion for the president for the next year.
Nominate Frank Houston as president of the School Facilities Corporation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor by the raise of hands?
And next meeting we'll probably have buttons.
The motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Congratulations, Frank, the gavel is yours.
Thank you, sir. And going to C-two, Vice President. Any motion?
I motion Joan Gardner for Vice President.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it passes five zero. Also need a secretary, a motion please.
Motion that Doug Paulson, Paulson serve as secretary?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Passes five zero. We also need an assistant secretary. Need a motion?
That's me. Pick me.
Uh, nominates SD Harper as Assistant Secretary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. And we need a Chief Financial Officer. Motion please.
That would be Dr. Barra.
No, oh, no, no, it's Mark. I nominate Mark Olson for CFO.
Do I add that to my business card? CFO?
Mm-hmm.
He's got a promotion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it passes five zero. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
All right.